Would you do the honors of reading how we conduct this thing now?
Sure. In accordance with the government's order superseding suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 23rd, 2020, the public committee and the planning board shall be fully closed to the public to avoid group congregants. Alternative profile, excuse me, alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, shall be televised via Thomas Committee Television. Real-time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote. The application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair through the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate time in the meeting. There's a lot of good instructions. One, instructions and the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. www.falmouthma.gov/. Two, please plan 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time. Though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you will access for this meeting. Three, additionally, public comments may be sent in advance following planning at falmouthma.gov. That was prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made part of the meeting record and may be read into the record. Displayed during the meeting or discretion of the chair. Four, applicants, their representatives and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Again, the representatives, individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department. Alternative means real-time participation. Unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Commentary exhibits and our visual presentation should be submitted to the meeting through the following. Planning@falmouthma.gov, so they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Hey, I'm hearing a lot of noise and I don't know if somebody's wrestling papers or what. Just word of warning that unless you're muted, you can hear. Was anything Tom or Michaela submitted the five hours before the meeting as per these instructions?
No, nothing was submitted.
Okay, thank you. Then, I know for me, it has been disconcerting to see these comments cascading in while we're holding our meeting. The Zoom meeting and I asked Paul, because I happen to be talking with him about something he said is disconcerting to him, to see them sliding in where that chat function is. So, what I'm going to do is ask that we all simply ignore it because Zoom meetings are new to me. And so I was kind of paying attention to that too, thinking maybe I better. So I would please ask all of you to ignore what is coming in through the chat function. And then at the appropriate time for public comment, Tom or Michaela or Thomas will elevate those chat comments that we should be taking into account for public comment. Does, is everybody okay with that way of doing things? Jim?
I totally disagree. I think it's totally inappropriate to have out of order comments blast across the screen while somebody else is talking. It should be run just like in a meeting. If they got up in a meeting and started talking out of order, they would be called, they did it two or three times, you'd call the police and have them hauled out.
But Jim.
We have the ability, we have the ability to do it here, we should do it.
Tom? Tom, you?
Yeah, yes ma'am, sorry, I'm working on my mute skills here still. So, this is something we have talked about in-house, it's something we've actually got as an agenda item a bit later on. Essentially, the chat function isn't muted in a public meeting. We've had this conversation in-house with IT and a couple other departments as well. The chat function is essentially like someone raising their hand in a meeting, waiting to be recognized by the chair. The principal difference is, is when they raise their hand in a chat, you don't have to wonder what they're going to say because it's written down on the bottom of the screen. When that is introduced at the meeting, comes through the chair and through staff where we have a chat that comes in. I'm aware of them, Michaela's aware of them, as is Thomas, and Thomas will oftentimes let us know, oh, a chat came in earlier in the meeting that pertains to something like this. So, we have, we have, we have three people monitoring the chat and while I know your attention is sort of drawn to it when it comes in at the bottom of the screen. When we get to those things, if they're in the midst of a hearing where someone has that right to speak, we'll bring them up. But essentially, that's static at the bottom of the screen in the interim. And basically on our standing of open meeting law, you can't mute those because that would be like not letting a person raise their hand.
I totally disagree. I asked you 10 days ago to get on a video with me and go through this. You finally posted my request an hour before this meeting to everybody else and you totally ignored me.
Hey Jim?
I'm gonna be quiet from now on, I'm gonna be quiet from now on, but there's a better way to do this and I've been trying to get you to do it for 10 days. My last comment.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments on the chat sliding in? Bob?
I think the public has to title whatever comment they want to make with whatever the agenda item is that they're trying to address to help Thomas's and Adriana's job to make them a little easier. So they're not guessing where that comment should come up in to the discussion and what part of the agenda.
Excellent suggestion. Yes, Tom?
So, we, I said, we're, we're monitoring the chats and Thomas will oftentimes, as I said, we're constantly texting back and forth. I've had a couple already between IT and myself about what's up with this and who is that? So when a chat comes in, even if it comes in at the beginning of the meeting and it pertains to something at the end of the meeting, as it did last meeting, Thomas will say, oh, we had that chat way up in the, in the room. So we'll scroll back to them and bring them up at appropriate time. But it is, you know, and frankly, the governor's orders talks about the limited participation in the meeting. The folks who we do elevate to be participants are typically those people who are the applicants and their team. If we were in a live meeting, those people who had concerns about the project would be granted sort of the same sort of stature of being able to come to the podium and make their case with what, in their own voice, perhaps with their own graphics and things like that. But under the rules of engagement we're working right now, that only opportunity for them as a, as a butter to participate is through chat or through an email received five hours before. So they are somewhat of a disadvantage because they don't get to make their point in person in that same, in that, in that way that they typically would. So it is an imperfect environment that we're living in and we're doing our best to accommodate folks, but we can't exclude folks from the meeting. Because frankly, there are already those people who are, the applicants get the same sort of status that we get with a screen and audio and all that stuff. But the people who are butters and things like that, they're limited to that chat function and we elevate those, we bring those chats up when we're in the midst of those hearings.
Okay.
Pat?
Yes. So. Picture, so if you were waving your hand, I couldn't see you.
Oh, sorry, I don't know what happened to the picture. Oh, there is, okay.
Okay.
So here's my question. In a normal meeting, the participants in the audience would not be recognized until the topic that we were discussing came up. So what I don't understand is why can't the comments be sort of taken aside? And then when we're discussing the issue, we can see those chat items and talk about it. But, I mean, I understand what Tom is saying, but I've been on other Zoom meetings and comments that come in can be put aside until the topic is being discussed. I mean, this makes zero sense to me because we would never have this in a regular meeting. We wouldn't have people and then we wouldn't have had somebody file an open meeting issue because they weren't recognized at the time. So I don't understand, they come in and Tom, Thomas's and Michaela are sort of sorting them. They shouldn't come up until the topic is being discussed. I don't understand that, it's not rocket science.
What Jim is suggesting, because we had a conversation, is a webinar. And the term had not been used before. So only the speakers would have the platform. And then when you go to the public comment, we're taking this kind of out of order really because that's in our discussion area and I didn't mean for it to get this detailed. But a webinar does not allow anybody to speak. In that case, it is speaking or it would be writing in a comment until they are recognized. This is how webinars function because the only ones that have any capacity, and I don't know Pam, what you're referring to, whether it's a Zoom webinar, which it could be.
I mean, I'm on a zillion webinars just to keep up my license and everything and there's always interaction. You can always speak during a webinar. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I don't, I don't know because you know I'm not that technical at all. Okay?
Okay, well, I'll, I just say, I still don't see a reason why we can't take the comments that are not relevant at the time, put them in a queue. And when the topic is being discussed, those chats come up.
Well, this is what is being done, but they show sliding in, we don't see the whole thing when they slide in like that.
I don't see any, I mean, I haven't seen any of them now.
No, there haven't been any. Charlotte?
That's why, okay.
Uh, you're muted, Charlotte, you have to take the mute off.
I just wanted to ask that a technical problem like this be solved not during regular meeting time.
Yeah, I didn't mean for it to be discussed like this during regular meeting time, actually. This was going to be in our comment period. I just wanted to tell people how I was going to handle it tonight.
Which is good, thank you.
Okay, so if we can move on, please, the minutes, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the minutes. The minutes of the meeting of June 9th have been drafted. However, due to technical error in access to the meeting, objection posed. Council, we're going to have to redo that meeting in its entirety on June 30th. So the meeting minutes will be distributed through the planning department for a planning board to look at as a kind of a way to follow what we discussed the last time. However, I have two comments that I requested it sound, planning to take a look at, I know he's been busy, but there's two comments I need to get clarified. And then I will give them to the planning department and they in turn distribute it to the planning board members, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Minutes to be approved.
Thank you. Um, we have first on our agenda, an approval not required plan, the applicant, Michael and Nicole Dingeman, plan of land to divide one parcel into four parcels located on Timothy Bourne Cartway map 3201001015B Falmouth Engineering. Does anybody have any comments on that plan, which we all received in our packet? Tom?
We do have Mike Borselli in the house who's prepared to present the plan and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this plan? John, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm in the butter, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have, Charlotte?
Um, the writing is so tiny, I just would like, um, the frontage on each of those lots confirmed. I think I can read it, but I'm not sure.
Madam Chairman, if you would like, I can share my screen and zoom in on it and describe the frontage?
That would be good, I think. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt to share my screen, hold on. Are you seeing a plan now?
I'm, there you go, yes.
Okay, so for the record, Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. In response to the question, I can zoom in on the frontage. And each of these lots has been designed to provide the minimum frontage of 100 feet. This one is 102.96, this one's 106.82, this one's 104. And this one's just over 100 at 104 and some change. And the lots are also showing the minimum lot area. And the circles represent that they have met the minimum lot width. The minimum standards are noted on the bottom left-hand corner, I'm gonna zoom in on that for the zoning district. 45,000 square foot, 150-foot lot width and 100-foot frontage for the AGA zoning district. So these lots have adequate access and frontage. Timothy Bourne Cartway has been brought up to town standards as far as pavement width because of the recently constructed subdivision to the west of this property. I'm happy to answer any questions. Can I connect to the screen if you'd like?
Does anybody have any questions for Michael?
I moved to endorse.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to endorse. Remember, we have to put the codicil on there without regard to buildability, et cetera. So, been moved and seconded. Any other comments?
Clever plan.
Pardon?
It's a clever plan.
Yeah, all in favor signify by raising your hands. Okay.
Hey Tom, we can't see you.
Yeah, John, you're sliding down, but he's recused, so.
Oh, he's recused, I'm sorry.
Six in favor and.
Go back to sleep, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
It's nice to see you all, even though we're on a screen, so have a good evening.
Great seeing you two again.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I just make a follow-up comment about the A and R that we just looked at?
Yes.
So, we had a number of discussions about A and Rs and the type of road that they are on. I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here and bring that plan back up. So previously, these lots wouldn't have been eligible for an A and R endorsement because they were on Timothy Bourne Cartway in unimproved way. And we've seen a number of those recently. The reason these folks are able to do an A and R is because the road that's in front of it was approved under subdivision control. And the developer who owns the road has built it and improved it, which has allowed his neighbors to benefit from the A and R plan. I don't think it's any secret that the guy who recused himself as the abutter is the guy who built the road. So even though it seems unfair that somebody else's labor produced a condition that allowed someone else to benefit by being able to subdivide their land. Those are the rules under Massachusetts general law that we operate under. So if it's a road, private or public, private in particular, that is improved to the subdivision standard.
Let's go.
The board is right within their to endorse the plan.
Thank you, Tom. I, we move on to planning board discussion slash decision. Applicant Dick Betzig, special permit application and site plan review application to construct a 40-foot by 80-foot prefab storage building for equipment and materials located at 350 Old Meeting House Road, Cape and Islands Engineering. And Tom, I believe you wanted to say something.
Yes, we've, as you know, we had a, 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 a bit of a technical issue at our June 9th meeting, which was discovered after the fact. So we are repeating our June 9th meeting on June 30th. This will be on the June 30th meeting. And the only reason it's on tonight's meeting is because at the hearing on June 9th, the board continued this to a date certain. So when we are on record of continuing a meeting to the 23rd, we're obliged to have that on the agenda. Even though we're not going to be voting on it tonight, we'll be voting on it on the June 30th meeting. After we essentially have the June 9th meeting open, we'll be eligible to vote on that on June 30th and to make sure things just stay out of any other confusion and any other kind of muck. I know it's a little odd to have this on three times in a row, but that's why it's there on the agenda.
Jim?
I really don't understand the comment. He just said that the June 9th meeting didn't happen and now we're being held by it happened at the June 9th? I find that a catch-22 and I don't understand what he's saying.
All right, I may try again.
Please.
We had a meeting on June 9th. And the meeting.
Technically, it did not happen.
Tom, Jim, stop interrupting, please.
You're right, sorry.
We, we did have a meeting on June 9th. And someone who couldn't get into the meeting because of the password protection claimed it was an invalid meeting. And with a discussion with town council, it was the advice of town council, do the June 9th meeting over again to make sure that no one had a complaint that they could take to the attorney general, innocent as it was. But these are things that we did not know until after the meeting. And so anything that was acted on on June 9th has to be acted on again. But because we had a meeting and because the people who were at the June 9th meeting, who might have heard this is going to be continued to June 23rd, they have a right to come back when they expect to see that thing, which is why it's on the agenda for tonight. We shouldn't, because of this is such a very odd duck, we shouldn't vote on the decision because technically, we had an invalid meeting on June 9th due to the password protection. And while we're on the topic, I just want to say that I did chat with IT to make sure this was not an issue of, of a technicality, that there was a timer on the password and the password comes off at the meeting time. Now that password has to be physically removed and it didn't happen. And it didn't happen until 15 minutes or so into the meeting. And even though the people, we weren't talking about any of the public's business during that 15 minutes, we were talking about the organization and the meeting, planning board discussion. The nearest analogy that we can have to this from town councils is let's say the planning board or some board was having a meeting and they're having an executive session beforehand. And there's a sign on the door that says, do not enter executive session, so everybody's out in the hallway. The meeting starts, the executive session's over, but nobody gets up to unlock the door and take the sign on to let people into the meeting. In a physical meeting, someone could pound on the door and go, are you in there? But in the Zoom meeting, someone can't pound on the door until the password is done. So anybody who was there in that first 15 minutes, who may have wanted to ask the board about any of the agenda items, might have decided, oh, well, I guess they're not having a meeting or what the deal is. And that person might have left and not had the opportunity to express their concerns to the planning board, which is why we're repeating the entire meeting over from soup to nuts on the advice of council. And it's gonna cost, you know, the applicants their time to come back. We, as the town of Falmouth, have re-advertized this through the newspaper. We've sent out a butters letters as well. We've spent, and I asked Melinda to give me a dollar figure on it, but we've spent probably five, let's see, ad fees were $522.60. Postage was about $462. So we are out of pocket $984.60 to do the meeting over again because we, at least in my office and in the town hall, are dead serious about making sure that people don't have a complaint about the conduct of the meeting. And the thing that I never want to have happen is to have someone have a project that is for the, that is a technically sound project, that works, it meets all the parameters and all the requirements, but someone's allowed to appeal something on a technicality. And this could seem to be one of those things that could be appealed on a technicality. So we have taken these extraordinary measures to re-advertize everything, to spend money out of the, because we, we're not putting this on us, on the applicants to do that. This was our bad, as the kids would say, we fixed it, but we did it again. And the inconvenience to the board and the applicants, I apologize for, but it was a human error. A human error's happened and we're fixing it. And I don't know what else I can tell you about it.
Okay. Yes, Pam?
Is it only me or does anyone else hear like a TV or a conversation or something going on?
I hear it. I hear it, and I'm finding it very disturbing, I don't know where it's coming from.
If everyone would mute their microphone until you're ready to speak, that will help with sound quality, absolutely.
Okay. I'm not muting mine right now because I have, I direct the meeting, but all right, so that describes. Why we're doing what we're doing, we have here and we will not discuss it, is a decision that we can then vote on next week, but it was handed out in our package. Um there's, I think, been a few modifications, it's been cleaned up a little bit by Michaela. And so we will have the opportunity to review it over the course of this next week. When it comes up on the redo of the June ninth agenda, which we're holding the meeting on June thirtieth. Then we can vote the decision as well. We don't normally do that, but we've got this space of time. So I want you to all take a good look at this, if you have any questions on the decision or comments on the decision. Um you can get to Michaela or Tom and have those corrected, changed. Before the meeting, the redo of the meeting on the thirtieth, at which time we'll do another discussion on it and then we can vote. A decision if everybody feels comfortable at that time. Does anybody have any problem with doing that? Okay, thank you. The next we move on to public discussion. The applicant is Raymond DiNardo, site plan review application. To construct an attached accessory apartment located at nine Hitching Post Lane, B S S Design. Um any comments on this, please? Yes, Pam?
So when I looked at this, it bore little, if any resemblance to, I believe, what the board's concept of an accessory apartment in fact is. It looked like a tiny cottage and you're adding on an estate to it. And it bore no resemblance, as I said, to anything I've seen yet. Um lots of things in there are quite disturbing to me. Um you have a supposed garage with a floor.
I'm going to interrupt you momentarily, Mr. DiNardo has joined us. You may notice on your screen.
No. I don't have anything, I have nothing on my screen to indicate.
Oh, that's right, you don't, but the rest of us can see Mr. DiNardo, thanks for joining us tonight.
You're welcome, thank you.
If I may.
Now I see him.
If I may, can I put up uh the plans on the page here for, and Mr. DiNardo walk through what he's.
Think so.
I think so, is that okay with you, Pam? You're commenting on it.
Sure.
Tom would like to do screen sharing and put up the plans.
Alrighty, and hopefully what you're seeing on the screen right now is uh page one of the plan designed by B S S from Mr. DiNardo's property.
It is.
So uh I will happily flip, happy to flip pages for you, but if you want to talk about what's determined consent, of course, what you're, what you.
Okay, Pam, would you like to continue with your comments, please?
Yes, so we have a very small nine hundred or so square foot existing home. And then we have sort of a little breezeway connector and then a garage and then another small house. So it looks to me like we're building a very large structure. Um next to a very tiny structure. I don't believe in any scenario we've seen, we've seen anything quite like this with the comparison of the. Uh existing and the proposed structure. Um but the proposed accessory apartment also has a component of a second floor master bedroom above the garage. Two bathrooms, one in the garage area and one in the proposed accessory apartment. And a parking lot with three cars in front of it. And I don't believe this was our intention. Um to have a structure like this in any neighborhood. It certainly doesn't fit with the character of any neighborhood I've seen. Um where you have a very tiny home and then you build quite a large structure and a porch. So I was, I I was quite distressed by this.
Could I, could I respond, uh please?
Um you could, you might want to wait to hear some other comments, Mr. DiNardo, I think, and then you can respond to all of them. I think that would be more efficient.
Thank you.
Okay, uh Charlotte. Charlotte, turn your microphone back on.
I can see um why Pam would say what she's said, but I see this plan quite differently. I think that what Mr. DiNardo is trying to do, he can correct me if I'm way off base, I think two things are happening at once. He's making an addition to his home and onto his home, he's adding a garage that has a second floor that have a a master bedroom. For the people who live in the primary residence. It's not for the accessory apartment, it's for the primary residence, it will be the master. In the existing house, there are two bedrooms and in the addition to the house, uh there's the breezeway and downstairs, there's a garage. And a set of stairs that lead upstairs to the master bedroom. But there's not a connection upstairs uh from the master bedroom into the proposed one-story accessory apartment. So I think um it it is a little different from what we used to, we don't usually see a a homeowner trying to accomplish two things at once. But you know, we can walk and chew gum and this is in addition to his house plus an accessory apartment. And he's really, um I think there are some other issues that I could raise, but I can see what he's trying to do, is that what you're doing, Mr. DiNardo?
Uh yes, that that's correct, um I bought the property all about forty years ago, it would say two-bedroom home. Uh after thirty years of uh service with the federal government, I'm about to retire. Uh I have a family of four, um by making this addition, we'll have three bedrooms. Um and uh then the accessory apartment, I I hope to uh, you know, age in place. When I I grow a lot older and uh that's only five hundred square feet. So I I think um it's, it was a wonderful opportunity for me, I I'd like to spend my life here on Cape Cod. I was really thrilled when the regulations came out and uh especially the sewer. And um you know, I I I'm really thrilled about this and I I hope you'll see it favorably.
I think it's an interesting solution, but I think that there are a couple of other of things, I don't know how to deal with them, other people probably do. But then uh the, on the things that are required for an ex- first I'll say the things that are really good about this. Where our uh local comprehensive plan is really hoping to increase the density in your neighborhood and this is going to do that, so that's a good thing. And I actually kind of like the look of it, so I'm not minding that, but it's, it's too close to the road, you're going to have to go to the zoning board, you already know that. But I think the the, we needed a landscape plan, one of the required things that you need to uh submit with your plan. Um because it needs a special permit, you need to have a landscape plan. So we don't have one of those, so that's sort of something not there. But then the engineering department, the health department, uh the health and sewers, the water department. Um they too have comments of things that need to be um taken care of, have you seen those comments?
I I have not seen those those comments.
Oh, well, they're all in writing, Tom, would they, they, or Pat, uh through you to Tom, would they normally be shared with the homeowner so he could see the comments that we have?
I am fairly certain that Michaela has been in conversation with Mr. DiNardo.
Well, maybe you could get a copy of of these documents and then uh you'd, you know, you'd have a good record of them, wouldn't have to take uh notes now, but there are driveway issues. The driveway is uh too wide where it reaches the street, it's too short to allow for it to have an apron of the size that it needs. Um uh there are uh approvals that you're going to have to get either subsequently or beforehand if we continue this. There are grading and drainage needs that have been uh have been noted. Um uh something about the address and because it's in a coastal flood zone, you need more information about the um the height of the proposed addition off the ground. That doesn't seem to be on the plans either, so I don't, maybe it should be continued, I don't know what others would think.
But may I have any other comments from the board, please? Jim?
I believe he got on the wrong foot from the get-go. In my opinion, this is no way has the architectural effect of a single-family home. I don't think the applicant ever read the bylaw and saw that as a critical element. I think it's just, I think it could fit if it was redesigned, but this, in my opinion, is in no way looks like a single-family home. It looks like a mixed-use apartment complex. And I think we're in real trouble if we go down a positive thing on this one, I feel very, very strongly. It does not look like the architectural effect of a single-family home. And the applicant should have had that pointed out to him the very first day back in July of last year when he drew this plan. And somebody's not giving him good information, either his designer is not reading the bylaw, his engineer or whoever he's talking at the town. But to bring this to our meeting and say, hey, isn't this wonderful, it looks like a single-family home. The emperor has no clothes.
Mr. Fox, I'd just like to comment that, you know, we we took great pains to to actually make this look like a a single-family home. You know, we transitioned uh the height of the second story into the first story and um, you know, uh. I I I really, uh you know, work very closely with my designer uh to do that, so I'm a little bit disappointed in uh your viewpoint on that.
May I have any other comments of board members, please? Pat? I can't see because I've only got four people on screen here, so who is it?
Pam.
Pam, okay.
So what's a little bewildering to me, um after Charlotte's comment, is from the existing dwelling. Is it your intention to remain in that portion? Or are you planning to move into the new portion and use your existing um home as an accessory apartment? Because that would make a little more sense to me.
Mr. DiNardo, would you respond to Pam, please?
Yes, no, the intention is the uh, the primary residence is the larger unit at one thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet. And the accessory apartment is a a single-bedroom, one-bath, five hundred and three-square-foot unit attached to it. And that's, that's uh, in fact, uh you know, it it's a good likelihood that even family members would be living there. Uh so that that would be the accessory unit off to the side.
Except that you can get into that accessory unit through the mudroom from the existing dwelling. And you can get into the garage area, it looks like, from the accessory apartment. And it looks like that master bedroom, which is on a second level, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So you have to go out of the primary dwelling through the mudroom, up the stairs to get to a master bedroom?
No, that is, that is not correct, you you go through the uh primary residence through the mudroom and uh. Through, there's a set of stairs there, I call that a little office area, but primarily it's an access to go to the, to the uh. The master bedroom, which is over the garage, so.
Right, so so you go through, you go through the mudroom, up the stairs to get to the master bedroom?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's, that's exactly what I said, so. Again, with the garage and the master bedroom above the garage and the office space and the stairs. Um this is just very much out of. Um context to me for an accessory apartment. It just doesn't look like a single family that you've added on to. If you just added a garage with an accessory apartment above the garage, that would make sense to me. But this just is way out of proportion for everything that we've been looking at for an accessory apartment.
I I just wanted to clarify, I I I think uh, I think you understood that correctly, but that is part of the primary residence. All of that is part of the primary residence, so it's really just an additional bedroom. Uh you know, I I I have a family of four, I need three bedrooms, it's just a bedroom over over the garage.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, but I don't believe we've seen another accessory apartment come before us. That in fact adds to the primary residence as well as. This garage and this accessory apartment.
Tom, do you have a recollection of that?
Yeah, we did one on Wild Harbor uh last year, a couple of years ago, in addition to the house, was an attached accessory unit. Uh keep in mind, uh it was uh, it was a larger structure to start with, and so the accessory unit is a bit more invisible. In that Wild Harbor property, and I think likely that unit, if I recall, was towards the back of the uh primary residence as well. In this case.
Okay, I remember that.
In this case, the lot is a bit more linear, about a half acre uh lot that we're uh that we're working up of. You can see that in the staff report that Michaela uh put together.
And Bob, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um with the, with the design, if the uh, it looks like there's a doorway from the accessory apartment into the garage, that that could be lost. Um if the uh new structure was pushed back a little further, that might help ease the restriction with the uh length of the driveway, although the. The width still needs to be addressed, but as far as uh it looking like a a single-family dwelling. Uh the Quakers used to do this, they'd build a primary structure, put a barn next to it, and then as their family grew, they would just add on buildings uh onto the barn or to the other side of the the house. And I also uh look at what could possibly, uh another owner could possibly do, they could tear down the existing house and put up a huge monstrosity. That would uh be just as big, if not a bigger footprint, go out to all the setbacks if they wanted to. And I can understand why somebody doesn't want to do that, they want to live in this uh, the existing uh dwelling while this is going on. And I think if it's uh, like I said, if they set it back a little bit uh and uh address the issues that engineering has, I don't really see a problem with it. Just right now on the corner of uh uh Brick Kiln and Trotting Park is a huge uh ranch house. It's probably sixty, seventy feet long right now and doesn't look like a a typical house. And it it was a spec house, so just because a house is long and narrow, uh doesn't mean it uh isn't or doesn't look like a single-family dwelling.
Paul?
Yeah, I have uh, I have two comments, one is uh, I look for a second, uh first floor plan in the drawings. It shows between the existing dwelling and the new dwelling, the landing and the mudroom. At the elevations, the colored elevations that are provided, I don't see that at all, there's a window there and I don't see the landing or the room. At the back, on the plans, it shows a landing. Then in another drawing, it shows billco opening. And yet on the second elevation and coloring, it shows a platform of some sort with a little structure behind it, so it, that didn't make a lot of sense to me. The second issue is I'd like to see the calculation ratio of the new floor area to the existing house. It appears to be excessive based on the bylaw.
Hey, Jim, you had your hand up as well. Think, right?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that we said that it hasn't been done before, it's been done, I think it's done more than twice. We have seen, I I I think, a house in Sippu Wisset, where they built the whole brand-new house. And put an accessory apartment in and you couldn't tell from the outside, so it can be done. Granted, the person that did it had a lot of money and it was a very expensive home, but we have seen more than one, maybe two, where they've made it. Where they've really been able to take a look at what I think is, at least when I was working on the bylaw, the most important factor was the architectural effect. at least when I was working on the bylaw, the most important factor was the architectural effect of a single family home. And I don't believe this has it at all.
Okay, Charlotte?
Um, okay, but I think that it can be improved. I don't want to be that discouraging to Mr. Donardo. Uh, the fact that even if we had never done it before, that's not a reason to disapprove something. You know, new things come into the world and we need to look at them afresh. So that's not even an argument. But here, he has a problem to solve. It's going to help with the appearance of the building. He has to move the whole new portion back in order to be able to solve his driveway problem. In order to be able to narrow it as it comes into the street. And once he moves it back and breaks that long facade, it's going to improve the appearance. And if he were to move back the garage once back to the edge of the, what he's calling the mudroom and move the next section, the new cottage section back yet again, so that there are three different levels for the facade, it will have lost that look, but kept basically the same floor plan. Because just as Bob had said, this is how the Victorian houses grew. Bit by bit, as more people wanted to occupy it. If there were no door connecting the cottage through the garage to the primary residence, there wouldn't be the issue of, oh, they're not entirely separate. But if there were no door, you're forcing family members to go outdoors all winter to visit one another. So you need to think about that.
Bob?
Uh, we also have to take into consideration the size of this lot. This man doesn't have the luxury of a huge lot. And this is the area that we wanted to target for these, these units. And when you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you don't have a lot to work with, no pun intended. But, uh, you know, I think we need to be a little more flexible and, uh, we could allow, uh, allow them to go back to the drawing board. I don't think we should be, uh, telling exactly how it should be designed because the board gets in trouble when it does that. Uh, we leave it to the, uh, owner and the, uh, designer that he's hired to come up with something. We can suggest that, uh, we don't like the monolithic look of the front of it and leave it at that. Let them deal with that. Uh, we should not be designing this project for them.
Correct. Thank you, Bob. Okay. Now I've kept my mouth shut as I usually do while the board is discussing it. So I'm going to put my two cents worth in right now. Might be only worth two cents. I find that the three cars and the overly wide driveway is offensive. It looks like a parking lot and that gives it more of a commercial look. I think, and again, I'm not trying to redesign it, but I think instead of the monolithic look, if the accessory apartment were put back about three feet, so you have another break in line, that would also allow you perhaps to curve the driveway and put two cars off to the side. And then you can hide the excess parking, which is one of the requirements that we had with our bylaw. So that it, it would look like a family home without being a parking lot. The extra parking would be hidden and be incorporated in it. And I think I'm saying this correctly. Um, we normally with site plan review, Mr. Donardo, do ask for some landscaping plans. And that's not anything fancy. It's, okay, I'm going to put shrubs here. Because you were only shown the one three inch caliper red maple.
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if there are shrubs on the property, no shrubs, how you plan to landscape it. We're not asking for anything terribly fancy, but you know, if you're going to put arborvitae there or yews or flower garden, you know, perennial flower garden, something like that. So we get a better idea of what this would look like as a family home. Because the one structure family home is supposed to look like one structure. And right now with the three cars parked in front with that long unbroken front, um, it looks like an apartment building perhaps. I wouldn't know until we're built.
Thank you very much for those comments. Um, you know, uh, Tom, uh, my, my engineer was, was trying to fit everything on the lot, you know, with, with the proper setbacks and whatnot. So we can certainly, you know, revisit that a little bit, but, uh, that, that was, that was tough to get everything to fit in. Also, I, I just wanted to, uh, someone had a question, you know, I, I thought that the, the setbacks were proper. Uh, does someone have an issue with that?
Well, one of the reports, one of the reports said that you have to, excuse me, it has to be 25 feet back from the street.
Right.
Michaela, would you like to answer that, please?
Yeah, can I please comment on that? Um, so I, I spoke with the building inspector, uh, briefly before. Unfortunately, we weren't able to reconnect today, so I'm hoping to touch base with him. Um, but without him going and looking at the plans, he doesn't believe this will have to go back before the ZBA. Um, because stairs are allowed to have four feet into the 25 foot setback. Um, so because the house is set back 25 feet to the corner, um, it still abides by the bylaws because the stairs are the only thing encroaching on that setback.
I think I recall that from other properties, maybe even including my own. Um, so you may not have to go to the ZBA.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Michaela. Yeah, we, we had a previous building permit, you know, to do the, uh, the roof and the windows. And that was considered a landing. And I was always under the impression that the 25 foot setback, you know, was authorized to the foundation there.
Okay, um, so we need to obviously see you ag- oh, Pam, yes. Unmute your microphone, Pam.
I'm having a little difficulty. I'm looking at the picture of the whole structure with the doorway going into what looks like the back of the garage. And I'm wondering that little structure off to the right, that's a-
Excuse me, Pam, is that on the screen right now? What you're looking at, or is that a second page?
No, I'm looking at the actual, like a photograph, not the, uh-
Rendering.
The rendering, sorry. Yes, that one. Nope. Nope, the other side. Nope, that's side.
I got one more.
One without the garage. That one. Okay. So that little structure off to the right of the deck.
Basement stairs.
Can't see it because the pictures are in the way here. We can't see it on our screen.
Oh, I can see it on my screen.
That's the basement stairwell.
It's what?
It's a basement stairwell.
For the existing house.
It shows stairs on the floor plan.
That's correct.
So you enter the basement, Pam, from the door on that rear little bump out.
Instead of a bulkhead, you have a room.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to make any further comments to Mr. Donardo? I think you're getting the impression, Mr. Donardo, that we would like to see this happen. But we would like to see it happen so that it looks more like, it's broken up a little bit to look more like a family, a one family home.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments. I can certainly, you know, work on that. And I am willing to make some modifications that, uh, you know, like, like, like was said previously, the lot is quite small. And, uh, you know, we were doing our best to fit everything in. Um, but I, I think we can, uh, try a little bit harder though.
I'm pretty sure Tom Bunker can help you with that, too.
Well, Tom, Tom is the one that, that pretty much put this together this way, but so.
Yeah, but you've got, you've got space in the back. If you move that accessory apartment back a few feet to break the front line.
Okay, yes, because we have 26 foot setback now.
Right.
So we, we could move that out. That would not be a problem for us, I don't think.
And that would break the front line. Pardon, Bob? Go ahead.
We have Tom, uh, pay special attention to the engineer's comments as well.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
So you have to get the engineer's comments from the planning office. So you can, unless it's already been sent to Tom Bunker. Yes, Tom?
I was going to suggest that, uh, next week when Michaela's back on the property, she works Wednesdays, but she's also been working much more than she should, uh, with the things we've got going on here. So perhaps the beginning of next week, uh, we can set up a call with you, Mr. Donardo, Mr. Bunker and Michaela. Uh, and, uh, take a look at what we've talked about this evening. Uh, and get a little more direction for all of us pulling in the same direction on this.
That would be, that would be excellent. Sure. I would love to do that.
And then we don't want to set up a time to see this again yet.
Well, it is a, uh, and, and this is one of the interesting things is, uh, this is a, a site plan and the site plan requires a public meeting, which is not a hearing, which is one of those things we hope to fix when we fix our site plan bylaw. But I would venture to say that we should schedule this for a future meeting.
Right.
Likely, uh, towards the end of July to give, uh, Mr. Donardo a chance to, uh, talk with the folks, uh, tweak his plans a bit and then bring it back, uh, towards the end of July.
Okay, that's usually the, um, second.
That would be July 28th.
28th.
How does that work for your schedule, Mr. Donardo?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Uh, so would it be possible to get those comments, um, from the engineering?
If you got it, if I got an email address for you, and I think we do, Michaela will have them to you tonight.
Yeah, I'll send them to you right away.
Thanks a lot, Michaela.
Okay. Uh, yes, Bob?
We have anything, uh, coming in from the chat line regarding this? I mean, this is the discussion. It's not a hearing, but.
No, there's still only two.
Okay. So at, at what point, uh, will it be the next meeting that the public will be allowed to weigh in?
Absolutely, they can. They could now, too.
Yeah, the, the public can weigh in tonight through the chat function. But, uh, they're out enjoying a beautiful night and not hanging out of the planning board. I mean, I don't understand what's wrong with these people. But there's no activity in the chat room.
Charlotte?
Wanted to make sure.
Unmute your mic, Charlotte.
Question. I wonder why it's not part of a normal process to send the owner and the owner's representatives copies of the materials that we receive? So that they too have seen the comments from the other departments that weigh in here. It's a routine that they all weigh in. Why aren't they included in the communication loop?
I think it normally is, Tom, isn't it?
It is part of the normal process. It didn't happen.
Oh, this is a pandemic thing. Okay, thank you.
No, no, it's just, it's just trying to move balls. And, uh, stuff happens. And unfortunately, sometimes to me, sometimes Mr. Donardo, but typically we share those things with the applicant prior to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Donardo, if you can get all of this done, we would love to see you again on July 28th. If not, please let Tom or Michaela know that you'll need a little bit extra time. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to us tonight and being so nice. Okay? Thanks.
So did I hear a motion to continue that to July 28th?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Is there a second? To move it? Charlotte, you waved your hand, I guess. Your mic is off. Okay, moved by Pam, seconded by Charlotte. All in favor? Raise your hand, please. Okay, Jim, are you abstaining or what?
No, I'm, I'm opposing. I think you should start over. I think this is, we're going down a bad road.
Okay, so we've got six in favor, one opposed.
Um.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to planning board discussion. We essentially had the first one. Not by any plan, but it's happened. Conducting planning board meetings with Zoom. Oh, Mr. Donardo, uh, Thomas?
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Thomas has to, yeah, thank you. Um, so conduct, conducting planning board meetings with Zoom. And we pretty much beat that one to death, I think. Anybody? Yes, Tom?
Well, uh, we haven't. And, and to Jim's point, he asked me about something, uh, 10 days ago, uh, which I started working on at that point. And as you saw from the email I sent you this evening, uh, attaches my unfinished memo in trying to put these things together. So, uh, I think that, uh, we, uh, we, we, uh, can do a better job, uh, and we will do a better job. Uh, and I'll finalize, uh, and formalize the things that I sent at, you know, 5:44 this evening about how other folks are operating under Zoom. Uh, but as annoying as the chat function is, uh, to you folk, uh, I don't believe, and I will check, uh, again with IT and counsel to see if we have some options. Uh, but those, that little scroll banner is just likely going to be at the bottom of the screen where some blurb comes up. And if we have to, uh, and, uh, as I, as I said, uh, you know, the only time people actually have an opportunity to address the board is if it's a hearing. And those hearings are typically site, are, are, are special permits, subdivisions and zoning, uh, bylaw amendments for town meeting. Other things that are on the board's agenda aren't necessarily subject to public comment. The chair always has an opportunity to recognize someone to make those comments. So when these things come across the bottom of the screen as a chat, as I said before, they're like someone raising their hand, hoping to be recognized. But it's up to the chair to recognize them. And even though you can see them, uh, uh, you know, they're, they're just someone frantically waving their hand at you. They don't get into the record until they're read. In the case of, uh, uh, Mr. or Dr. Epstein, uh, last week, when he was, uh, making his comments in chat prior to Woods Hole Group's, uh, application being on, uh, I think his concern was he wasn't in the meeting. He didn't know what had happened beforehand. And he was just basically pasting the things he'd previously emailed me into the chat. We got back around to Woods Hole Group. We brought those things into the chat. We brought them back to the top. And what we can do, if you don't mind me sharing the screen, uh, once again, um, so now are you seeing the chats exclusively here on the screen?
No.
No.
All right. I'll work on my game on that. But essentially, uh, we'll, uh, bring those chats up so they're readable by the board on the screen. Uh, but that is, I said, the, the only ability for the public to comment. But people can, uh, wave their arm, uh, but not be recognized. And unfortunately, as I understand it right now, with the constraints of, uh, the open meeting law and how we're doing business with Zoom, uh, those chats are allowed to run across the bottom of the screen. It's essentially someone waving their hand wishing to be recognized.
Okay, Jim?
I respectfully disagree.
I, we know you do, Tom.
Okay, but he's making a statement like this a fact. And I just want to respectfully disagree as I have every time he says it.
I know. Okay. I recognize that. Tom?
If it's okay with the chair, uh, can Jim and I sit down and chat about this a bit offline?
I would like you to, yes. Jim?
10 days ago, I invited you to a Zoom meeting.
He knows that. He knows that. He's asking now to sit down with you to work on it. And so I'm saying, yes, you should.
I think it should, I think it should involve two other board members, too.
Let's leave it to the two of you initially to work it out.
We are, uh, we're, we're, we're doing our best to get as many things done as possible as we can. So, and I'll just keep saying that because that's what we're doing.
Okay. So the two of you will get together in some way and try to work out an agreement on this. Let's move on to planning board prioritization. I had brought this list to Tom, what, a few months ago before all this mess happened? Cause I remember sitting in his office, so it must've been in February. And this was just coming out of my brain saying, well, we're working on all of these things. And let's pull it together and try to prioritize it. Then Charlotte and I sat down and went over it again. And she added a couple of things to the list. So I simply put this together and sent it off tonight so that we can discuss it. And one of the things that came out of Charlotte's and my discussion on this is that we always seem to slide this to the end of the agenda and it doesn't get done. So we had prepared- So we had proposed perhaps doing a third planning board meeting, not necessarily every month, but maybe every month if the board is agreeable to this, to be working on something so that it gets done. But the goal that this is the only thing we take up for that meeting is for our long-term projects to get it done, get it finished. So I'd like tonight, you've all got it there. I would like tonight to see if you agree or disagree with the order and to see whether you agree or disagree with the potential third meeting in the month.
I don't see that. Was that in an email?
Yes, it was. Was, Tom, maybe you could show that on your screen. It was in an email, but it came through late, too.
Okay.
I think it was about four thirty, Michaela sent it through.
Okay, I didn't see it. But I, I, I don't know.
Charlotte? You must have your microphone off, Charlotte, because.
No, I didn't say anything. It's not off. I was waiting for Pam to say she could see the list. Oh, it's so tiny.
It's very tiny, yeah.
I, I can't possibly read it. Oh, well, that makes it, that makes it much better.
Yeah.
Um, this is, all right, so I, I see that now. But aside from the multifamily bylaw, we can't, I think that needs to be, we need to have a multifamily, uh, zone because we don't have that in town. And maybe we combine the multifamily bylaw with the multifamily zone. But zoning, we have to go before town meeting. And we can't, I mean, this has become a sticking point even with our Affordable Housing Committee that, you know, we need to have a zone to look at where we could possibly encourage builders who are looking to do multifamily housing, where they could cite them. So I, uh, maybe we could incorporate multifamily bylaw with multifamily zoning.
Okay, that multifamily zoning is not on the list. It's a multi-formal family bylaw, which is the same. Jim, do you have a comment on that?
Just, I, I, I just, I understand what Pat's, Pam's saying. But our practice has always been first create this, you know, the bylaw and then assign it to the zone. That's what we've done every other time. When we, when we created the Light Industrial Sea, we talked about it where, you know, what was going to be in it, and then we started applying it. I mean, it's, it'd be great to have, be, do both simultaneously. But I think our practice is to first create it and then see where it fits. And that's been our practice in the past. And that's the way I thought we always did it unless I'm mistaken.
No, it's not always, Jim, but you have more recent past. We've done it that way. Charlotte?
Um, what I, what I'd like to say, I'm not disagreeing, but if you look at this list, there are a couple of things about the list. Almost everything on here, uh, as Pam has pointed out, there are other steps that are involved in each one.
Right.
In each one. And that would be part of the discussion of them. What are the steps and when are we going to do it? Some of them are linked. I believe we're going to find that when we try to talk about the multifamily bylaw, just as Pam said, we are going to have to locate it and that is going to link it to our Davis-Strate's plan. They're going to be linked. But I think one way to approach this list is first to arrange for time for the board to actually address things. And that's the idea of the extra meeting. And then to look at the things that are the easiest to do. For example, if you take the fifty-three G thing, that's, we could do that by a simple vote. That wouldn't even take any time if we agreed on it. And perhaps by now we do. So that's like the lowest hanging fruit. The design review guidelines, we've already adopted them. We just needed to adapt them to Falmouth. That's undone work. That probably is very easy to do so that we can prioritize them according to the, how much time each one of them is going to take and what the steps are. If we had a, a third Tuesday meeting for as long as the pandemic runs, I mean, nobody can go anywhere anyway. So we're going to be home. We might as well meet. And then we could address each of these and see, well, what are the steps involved? How can we prioritize them if we commit the time to it? And if the planning staff commits the time to it?
So that's what we're doing right now is just trying to come up with the priority for these things.
Well, maybe we could decide, are we going to give it that extra meeting first? That, just take them in, in.
So we need to vote on whether we're all for another meeting.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
That's what I'm suggesting.
So should somebody make the motion that?
Okay, I'm, I'm willing to move that we add an extra meeting to address um, our long-term unfinished projects or long-term, whatever you want to call them, this list.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so who made the motion then?
Um.
Charlotte.
My apologies.
Charlotte made the most, motion and Bob seconded it then. Okay. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? And because you're not showing on the screen, you're going to have to call out your names.
Pam, can I?
Discussion.
What?
I would like to have some discussion, please.
Oh, I thought I called for one, for discussion, and I didn't hear anybody say anything. I'm sorry, John, please.
Uh, on, on my screen, on my computer screen, all I see is one person at a time speaking. I'm trying to watch it on television so I can see everybody at the same time. But as far as an extra meeting, I, if we're going to do that, I would like to limit the meeting to a certain time, whether it's an hour, hour and a half. I don't want it to be an endless meeting.
Right.
Uh, we should have just a little bit of guidelines. And the topics look terrific, but I, I don't want to let it go on and on.
I agree with you, John. Would you suggest a time limit?
Hour and a half.
Hour and a half. I see.
That is a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay. Any, any other comments? Pam?
I, I just, you know, when people do traveling, having a third or a fourth meeting in that month, or if people are going to be away, you, you can't then find a two-week period for someone to be away or they just missed the meeting. But trying to avoid that, maybe we do it once a month where we have three meetings every other month. Um, I'm, I'm, I haven't thought this out, but I do know that people take trips. And maybe not right away because no one's going anywhere right now. But, um, I just don't want to make it so onerous for people that you're forcing people to, uh, be out, you know, miss a meeting in order to accommodate a third meeting a month, which means you don't have a two-week period at all.
I, I would like to mention that we used to meet every week when I first joined the board. And we haven't been doing that for quite a while. I like the hour and a half limitation to it. I would also like to mention that, yes, people do travel and they don't go to meetings. Something of this nature, you could send your comments in if you had any.
That's true. That's true.
Because this is, this is planning board media, um, business in a way. Yes, we will be getting public comments, but.
Or, or, or you could join the meeting from another location.
True. Could do that if you chose to do so. If you're good. Paul?
Yeah, John's making a suggestion on limiting the length of time. Is he referring to a specific item on the goals here or is that for all meetings?
No, the goals, Paul, is what he was referring to. If we're going to do a third meeting per month, he doesn't want it to go on for two, three hours.
I understand that, but I'm just wondering if it's limited to a specific item on the agenda or for all meetings?
All, all the, all the items.
We pick one item for the meeting and that's it.
Yeah, hour and a half.
Right, then. So it's just for this specific third meeting that we're talking about, John, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Paul?
I would like to suggest an additional item or two for the goals.
Please.
Uh, the priority can be determined later.
Right.
The big concerns I have is coastal resiliency input is going to require a lot of rethinking by the planning board, both in terms of bylaws and zoning and things of that sort.
Uh huh.
Do about areas that have been destroyed for a storm, for example, they want to rebuild. What do we do with those? And I think that's going to be a big help coming down the road a bit.
Yeah.
Probably going to be put off for October now. And I think that's an element that really is going to have to take a lot of time for the planning board. I'd like to see that added to the, uh, goals to deal with that. And part of that, the seventh one is LCP for Commission Guidelines. Well, it's also relates to other things like resiliency. But I think I'd like to see the coastal resiliency input included in the goals. Second item I thought might be worth thinking about. We spent a lot of time discussing about streamlining activities, coordination between various people. I think we've come a long way. And it might be nice to have that on the agenda to see how we might promote that a little bit. Uh, we're doing much better with the zoning board. And I think it's a different by the planning department to make this go better than it has in the past. And I don't want to lose that. I think that might be a goal that we may want to consider to discuss sometime. Not the highest priority, but maybe want to consider it as well.
Okay.
I welcome anybody's comment.
So you want streamlining, bettering relationships? Is that a good way to put it or not?
No.
I guess you can call it streamlining activities.
Okay.
Don't you streamline development activities. But the criticism we're getting from a lot of people is, oh, you can't work with town hall. Well, things have gotten a lot better. And I think that's an unfounded criticism for the most part. So I think by identifying the fact that we're addressing this issue, I think we'll go a long way in trying to allay some of those concerns.
Okay. Pam? Yep, un, unmute your mic, Pam.
Thank you, Pat. I'm so glad I have a referee here. I'd like to add affordable housing because I don't want, you know, multifamily isn't necessarily affordable and affordable isn't necessarily multifamily. So I'd like to add a discussion on multifamily housing in Falmouth.
Okay.
That's on the list.
Well, it's multifamily is on the list, but not affordable.
Pam, would you like to see those two joined?
Well, they could be if we can do it in a way that accomplishes that there is a will, if there is, on the planning board to assure affordable housing in Falmouth. And is this where our hearts and souls are? Do we believe in affordable housing for the town? We can believe in multifamily and not have anything to do with affordable. Um, uh, so I, I want to see us go forward as a board um, looking at affordable housing. You know, where does it belong? Like you could put multifamily um, different places that don't necessarily meet the needs of folks who would be in an affordable unit. Do, do you follow what I'm saying?
Sure, because we want them near schools, near transportation, near shopping.
Right.
Yes. And you can put multifamily away from that.
Yes.
So they're not necessarily linked.
Right. But Charlotte, in one sense, you're right. Because zoning would have to accommodate both, not necessarily in the same place.
Right, I, as I said initially, I think that a number of these are actually interlinked and overlapping. And somehow I, I guess you pointed out, uh, mistaken my thinking. I've always thought of multifamily as definitely including affordable housing as one of its major uh, goals, trying to achieve more affordable housing. But keeping it as a separate issue really, um, makes sure that it gets thoroughly discussed and doesn't get the, the zoning of the two necessarily conjoined.
Right, thank you. That's exactly articulated it better than I did. Thank you.
I think that Paul's additions are really good also.
Well, Paul, did you, were, was your committee successful in getting your report put off a little bit because of the pandemic or not? Because their report is, their final report is going to be coming out.
What, what has happened? We had our first meeting since March this afternoon. And the chairman has requested an extension from the end of May until October. Some of the activities, including public awareness activities, is a big part of it. But we do, we're projects coming in and the report now is intended. We have a board, a board of selectmen, a select board. But we request an extension until October so we'd be able to get the information required for the modeling and then prepare the report. We're working on that now. So, uh, I know there's been no response from the board of selectmen, but I can't imagine they would not. And the committee goes over.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Charlotte?
I think if we adopt a practice of having an extra meeting, um, a month usually, chances are we will be adding to this list, um, as we go along because things come up. Then we will have created, uh, a separate time for considering long-range plans with the goal of getting them done. So the way we would measure is this working is something got done.
Right. Yeah, we're not suggesting a specific time for a first meeting. I'm hearing that. Nobody's come up with, oh, let's do it in July.
Oh, let's not do it in July.
Well, during the pandemic is perfect because we're trapped at home anyway. I mean, I don't feel that trapped, but we're, we're here.
Yeah.
This is ideal.
Paul?
Is there a consensus for adding the two suggestions?
Oh, we had, yeah, we had a motion and then we got out into the discussion. Maybe we should take a vote on it, right?
Uh, yeah, on the motion.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded that we add a third meeting with a limited time, hour and a half for the purpose of looking at our lo, long-term goals and that being the only subject of the meeting. Did I fairly state that motion?
Not, not looking at acting on them.
Acting on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? Please show your hands. Okay, it's a hundred percent of the board is in favor of that.
Wow.
So the first thing we'd have to do would be to set a date and that would be Tom and Michaela looking at the calendar. I believe. Yes, Tom?
Uh, we, uh, we, we hope, uh, by, uh, July sixth to be fully staffed again. Uh, provided we've got accommodations for folks who don't have, uh, uh, childcare options. So if all goes well, uh, by July sixth, we should have a full staff with us again, uh, which makes it a little easier to, uh, get things done. So, uh, I'm hoping good things are with us, uh, after July sixth.
Okay, Bob?
Would it be a requirement that, uh, someone from the planning office attend this meeting? Or could we just have the meeting ourselves?
I'll, I'll be there.
But I, yeah, I've given you an option.
I'll, I, I, I.
He doesn't trust us, Bob.
No, no, it's not that at all. It's just that I don't trust Bob.
Don't hold back, Tom. Don't hold back.
We need a strong link to the implementation.
Yeah.
Uh, I, 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 I trusted Viv more, but.
That's right. We got Bob Leary here with us tonight.
Yeah.
Liv couldn't make it.
No, uh, you know, these, uh, the, these things that we're talking about are the things that make planning a fun thing to do.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, uh, reviewing, you know, projects is not nearly as stimulating as trying to make a better world.
Right.
Uh, so these are things that I would very much appreciate being involved in for purposes of communication and insight and just to keep us all moving in, in the same direction there. So I think it benefits for all of us for me to come to the meeting, uh, because I come to most all of them anyhow. Because I like you and Bob in particular. I have to watch him though.
All right, so we'll look towards maybe July for the first gathering.
Pardon? John's gone.
What?
John's gone.
Oh, he is, isn't he?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, well, he didn't say he was leaving. We don't have any more votes to take.
No.
But, but, uh, so we'll look towards July at some point if those things work out, Tom, okay? Not, look at August. But we've already got, remember, the second and fourth Tuesdays booked for our planning board meeting. booked for our planning board meetings, so it may be the third Tuesday in there. So, anyway, we'll look forward to whatever the date can be on that. Uh, next, Union Studios meeting schedule and process during COVID nineteen. You're on, Tom.
I have, uh, not had an opportunity to chat with Union Studios, we both kind of outreach to each other and missed each other, so I, while I'd hope to have full-on discussion about that with Union Studios, uh, we just haven't been able to connect.
So we will move that to the next agenda, correct?
And my, once again, apologies.
Future agendas for pending applications, I haven't seen anything like that come across. Usually, you know, um, Linda takes a photo of what's up on the whiteboard. Do we have anything?
Typically comes to you on the third or the first Tuesday of the month, uh, and, uh, I don't know that we, uh, we did that, but it's, uh, once again, on our list of what needs to do. I can tell you that, uh, we've got, uh, you know, uh, the meeting on the thirtieth that's coming up is the, our redo. We don't have anything new scheduled for that, but, uh, beginning on our July fourteenth meeting, uh, which is Bastille Day, uh, we'll have, uh, a plan to celebrate, uh, with our solar arrays at, uh, Barnstable Fairgrounds, not that I want to prejudice the board on any applications coming in, but we'll have a very busy meeting for July fourteenth.
Okay. Okay, so July fourteenth is busy, but we don't know with what, except the solar arrays.
Well, I believe we continue just about everybody else to July fourteenth, uh, Rego's, uh, subdivision plans. Hopefully Thirty-two Walker, we get an application from them, asking them withdraw their, uh, application prior to that, or we have them back on the fourteenth. Uh, and I'm going to say there's one other thing as well, but I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, but we know it's a busy one, because we've got things from before coming forward and new solar, okay. Are there any announcements? Paul?
I don't have an announcement, I'll have to make a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Last night, Falmouth conducted its first town meeting outdoors at the high school. I know Tom was there, maybe some others were there as well. I thought it was well-handled, uh, worked, I think, very well until the sun went down, it got quite cool. But the interesting thing is there were a number of demonstrators in the audience, not where the town meeting sat, but in the bleachers, and many had signs, a dozen or more signs. And when Mr. Dufresne objected to the fact that we've never had a town meeting with any political input like that, moderator asked him to put the signs down, and they respectfully did. And he asked them if they wanted to speak, and he allowed one ask to speak. So I thought the whole meeting went extremely well. Um, and we were able to deal with, I think there were eight articles, and probably have a reconvene town meeting in thirty days at the same location.
Okay, Charlotte?
I'd like to comment on the same town meeting, I'm a town meeting member. Um, and I was really proud of Falmouth. We have approved having an affirmative action officer. Um, since George Spivey retired, um, that, well, as someone commented last night during the meeting, the position simply vanished, it was never formally abolished, it just didn't appear anymore. But now it's back, it will be filled, the town is making a real commitment to it. With the exception of one speaker, everyone spoke in favor of what a great idea it is for the town to be taking this step, and how great the need is in our town um, for just this kind of action. So I'm proud of Falmouth for helping take in that stuff, I think it's great.
Thank you, yes, Pam? Unmute. Pam?
That was, that was a goal of our, of our committee, of our affirmative action committee, since we re-energized it a couple of years ago and have been trying and working every angle we could. And Sandy just did an outstanding job. This has been moving along and moving along, and Dave Viera has been very, very supportive, much more so than others in town. And the fact that this took place with the eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is not exactly a budget buster, but for something that's so important, and I have to say, I don't know if it would have happened if the tenor in this country was different, because we tried and tried and tried and couldn't get anywhere. And so I don't love the fact of how it came about with Mr. Floyd, but I am, I, I can't tell you how excited and proud I am that the town took that step. And I'm very grateful to every town meeting member that supported that, because it's so important in this town. So, thank you, Charlotte, and all your cohorts.
Thank you all for commenting on that, I'm sure the people who worked hard to put that outdoor town meeting together will appreciate your comments.
They ran a very smooth meeting, it was good, they even had special chairs so that we wouldn't, um, spoil the, the, what do you call it?
Artificial turf.
Right.
Ah, right. Okay. Um, I do not have any general correspondence in my packet, so I'm going to have to assume there was none. Future agenda items, does anybody want to see anything up as a future agenda item? Okay, our next meeting is June thirtieth for the redo of the June ninth meeting, and with that, we are adjourned. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
John Drooly's back.